Councilman Ledbetter is busy with the south end of the county and Alderman Jones advised me that he would be running late and I'm not heard from Wes, so we'll go ahead and get started. We're here tonight to hear a report from AssetMax. So, Mr. Finley, you're up.
All right. Well, I'm just going to introduce Keith Tenclave from AssetMax. He's going to walk us through this report. And for those watching at home, it is on our website, the Street and Engineering Department website. And one of the things he is also going to be talking about that is also on the website is the PCI or Pavement Condition Index for every street in the city limits. And that web map is available on the street. If you go to cityofconway.org, click on Street and Engineering Department, and then there's a section called Interactive Maps. You can see the web map there where you can see the PCI for every street in town. And this report, like I said, is also on that website. So, I'm going to let him take it away and I'll be near if you have questions.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I want to use this report that you all should have a copy of as kind of an outline of the discussion. I'm not going through every single thing in detail because if you want to read every word on that, you're welcome to. But I want to kind of give you the highlights of that in the process and what took place. I want to address it in three major sections. One is just give you a pavement management overview. Why do you even need to do this? Why is this important to the citizens of Conway? Review the current conditions, and then also look at budget planning and what that looks like and the benefits that it can provide you. So, to start off, let's look at page four of the report.
Okay. We're going to hold up, and the best place in this building is going to be in the interior hallway by the restrooms.
Where we'll go.
Where I'm heading.
Okay, so now we're getting out of time out here. So, figure three on page four. One of the things I want you to take away from this is that why this is important. If you look on figure three, what it outlines for you is that in the big picture, if you use 68% to 70% of a pavement's life, it's going to cost the city about $1.50 per square foot to overlay, which is the right treatment about that point in time. But if you use 100% of the useful life of the pavement, it's going to cost you $5.50, and that's city dollars. Okay, that's your spending, because that's going to need a reconstruction. Now, as pavement deteriorates, repair costs increase disproportionately. Now, this assumes that you're doing the right treatment that's needed on that pavement and that you're actually doing what's appropriate, not just skimming by and doing whatever. You're actually doing what's right. But that's important to understand that, hey, it costs less to maintain good pavement than it does to just repair a failed pavement. Okay, that's an important takeaway from this. Moving to page three, going back one page, I want to talk you through, Finley mentioned what a PCI was, the Pavement Condition Index. It is governed by an ASTM that allows you to take data from the streets. So, we drove every street here, took data from those streets. The ASTM is developed by the Corps of Engineers to prescribe a way to come back to a number that's a PCI. It's a range of 0 to 100, 100 being perfect pavement, 0 essentially being gravel. Okay? Think of this as a credit score. A credit score is a snapshot number that has a whole lot of data behind it. It's just something more commonly seen. A PCI is a similar type of way. You've got a prescribed way to get a snapshot number, but there's a whole lot of distress information. It's an objective measurement system that is collected from your streets and what's going on there. Your average PCI of all city pavements is around 62. It is 62. That's considered in fair condition based on the ASTM. When you look at figure one on the bottom of page three, you can see that we looked at four different classifications of streets: major and minor arterials, collectors, and residential. These are generally in consistent condition. Major arterials are in slightly better condition. When you look at figure two, that's a PCI breakdown by ward, you will see that wards one, two, and four are generally around 60. Ward three is in slightly better condition at 72. That's likely due to ward three being the most recently developed area of the city. That's the logical conclusion there of that. Moving on to page eight, and if you have any questions, feel free to chime in there. I will obviously have time for questions later, but if you have any regarding anything specific, feel free to chime in. On page eight, looking at figure 13, this uses the PCI categories on the x-axis that are provided by the ASTM. On the y-axis, it is centerline miles. One of the things, just at a quick glance, you'll see there's a lot, the blue bars are a lot higher. The reason for that is that's residential. 66% of your streets are actually considered residential. Okay? And that's important as we get to the budgeting later and to remember that. Over 80% of your centerline miles are in fair or better condition. That's a good thing. We like seeing that. And figure 14 on the bottom, these, with the exception of the major arterials in ward four, the PCI trends are generally consistent between the wards. Ward four, the reason for that, there's only three major arterials in ward four, and that's, and they're all in bad condition. So, there's not a huge data set there is what's caused that. Again, you see that ward three has the higher PCI, and that's pretty consistent across different classifications. Moving on to the next page, and page nine, the figure 15 shows the PCI ranges by centerline miles per ward. What this does is just use two big picture groups of PCI classifications. Couple things to take away here are, one, how the PCI's vary. That's important to note. But also, how many miles are total in each ward. For example, if you look at ward four, it has 50% more centerline miles than ward three. This is important from a budgetary planning perspective on how you allocate funds to understand that, hey, there's just a lot more centerline miles of pavement in ward four than there is ward three. Approximately 11% of all pavements are 35 or below in PCI, but 47% are 65 or above. So, that's good to see. Moving on from current conditions, I'm going to look at page 13, but I want to discuss a little bit the maintenance budget planning. The general approach to this was to take the cost information provided by the city and attempt to correlate that back to a PCI. Okay? Because a lower PCI, even if it's going to have overlay, it's going to still have more patching, which costs money. It costs more money to it. And so, that has to be correlated. Then, we use the data that we took from the site to use this flow chart here that I won't bore you with the details of. But it's trying to use the data and to come up with a data-driven approach to project selection. What we did is take that information, and the first step was to develop, using your budget scenarios, develop a project list. That project list identifies projects based on need. This assumes that all projects affect citizens the same way. And we know that's not real, but pavement all deteriorates similarly. And so, that's from an engineering approach, that's really the technical approach to how you would do it. Now, since that's not the final result, and we understand you have citizens to serve, there's a second filter on that as well. And that, we collaborated with city staff, and we used the list that the database, the data list came out with, then used that list to filter through the city staff. But it was that list that was the starting point there. And then, the city staff worked with us, and we drove a lot of them and struck through some of the projects for various reasons that they knew that that was not the best benefit for the citizens for various reasons. It's important to note that the priorities here were arterials. That includes major and minor arterials, collectors, then residential. And for low budgets, which in retrospect, in kind of, in big picture, the budgets you're at are fairly low considering your amount of streets, you're not going to really realistically get to residential in these scenarios. And so, just understand that's why residential aren't showing up. It's because we prioritize them in that way. Okay, so, using that methodology, we, looking back at Appendix A, you can see it in your, you can see it, this is a board that shows it, but you've seen it in Appendix A. There's a map that shows the recommended project list. This is the methodology, the methodology we just discussed. This is the $1 million per year budget. A couple things to point out here are that we do have more than $1 million shown here. This likely will end up being a four-year list if this is the same budget. The reasoning is it doesn't hurt to bid an extra project or two just in case they come in low. And there's various possibilities on how these could be completed. And so, that's the reason for that, and that's why it's shown. Again, these are high, all of these are high return on investment projects. But we've taken the list of high ROI projects for the city and then taken them and used that second filter to make sure we maximize the ancillary benefits for the citizens. Appendix B lists the reconstruction projects. The major difference between these two lists and the methodology behind them is simply that in the first, in the overlay list, you're trying to maximize the return on investment. For a reconstruction project, you're just trying to find the worst projects, the worst PCI projects, and that is your starting point of the discussion, because it takes the same amount of money per square foot to reconstruct, assuming same pavement section. It takes the same amount of money to reconstruct any pavement. So, you're just trying to get a worst first when you're doing that. Okay, so, we've talked about understanding pavement management. We've talked about the current conditions. And the last point I told you I wanted to mention is the budgetary planning. There's a whole lot of budgetary planning scenarios that we presented in the back of the report in the, I guess, the section five or six. Apologize. But what I want to turn you to is page four, because that gives you the quickest snapshot for this meeting to understand what it is. Because what I want you to understand is the trade-offs associated with your decision-making. Our job is not to tell you what you should do. It's really to help you understand that when all the needs are presented to you, what the trade-offs are, and so that you can make the best decisions based on everything that you know as an elected official. And when you look at figure four, that is the budget that's needed, and it shows that to maintain your current pavement... all your funding sources for maintenance need to total around $5 million just to maintain it. Now, that's overlays and reconstructions, so it's not just one. That's where your funding needs to take place. And so that gives you an idea of how the funding situation needs to be. And then obviously, more funding would result in better conditions, and less funding would hurt your conditions. But that gives you a big-picture idea of what those trade-offs are as you go through your decision-making process. So before I open up for questions, three things I want to make sure that you leave tonight with. One is that maintaining good pavement costs less than replacing bad pavement. Okay, that's important for an elected official to understand in the long term. Second of all, understanding current conditions allows for you to objectively make decisions and understand what conditions everything's in and make data-driven decisions in that way. And then third, understanding that the budgetary trade-offs with the analysis allow you to kind of make a path forward. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Sorry, Mr. Jones is not here tonight because he would be quite happy with seeing some of this stuff that's in here. Mr. Grimes and I, or I can't speak for Mr. Grimes, I can speak for myself. Looking at some of this, some of it, I guess, is in our area. But most of it, a lot of it is in other places, but I have to answer to my people.
Well, I will say that I'm very impressed with this and pleased by it. You know, when we first approved it, I wasn't quite sure how valuable this information might be or how much we'd get out of it, but I'm very impressed with what we have. Thank you very much. Again, it comes down to dollars. So Finley, we may have said this already, but so for 2017, how much do we have available to spend on projects that we get to pick?
To address this list.
Or to address anything. How much do we have to spend on stuff we pick that's not already committed, being spent?
We have $1 million. And I will say, I handed a single sheet of paper out to everybody, which is an explanation of how I propose spending the street paving and reconstruction budget. There are $400,000 in that budget this year that were allocated to that budget this year. You might remember, we didn't do any overlays last year because we knew we were going to be doing a bunch of overlays this year, so we held all those projects. So I took all that money from '16 and '17, put it all together, and put all the projects together, and that's what's on that sheet. So that is, that's the $400,000 that is in street paving and reconstruction. We also have $1 million in a budget that is called the Enhanced Maintenance Program. And now, my recommendation is that we hold back 10% to 20% of that money to spend on other things besides just overlays. One of the things that I would like to do is a lot more pavement marking. And for instance, we got a really good price on pavement marking this year, and it's actually the same company that does it for the county. And what they do for the county is they do a quarter of the county every year. So we could do a ward per year, and not all the wards are exactly the same size. It would cost around $40,000 to $50,000 per year for us to stripe one ward per year. And that way, every street in Conway gets striped once every four years at a minimum. There are some that we might stripe more than that, but.
I think that's an excellent idea.
And so those, I'd like to do more drainage maintenance that I can do, it's got to be in right-of-way, pothole patching. So, and we can talk more about that later, but I would recommend holding back about 20% of that $1 million. So that leaves $800,000 if you take that recommendation. Now, you may, I'm sorry.
I have a question. On this list, is that the city services doing all, like this list here plus this list?
Yes, with the exception of the fact that we contract out the overlays. So really, most of the things on that list is overlay, so we will contract that out. And one of the things that I was going to make, which list are you holding, I'm sorry?
Well, I've got this one-page list that you guys.
The one that you handed out.
And then you, then the one.
So the only reconstruction, the only two reconstructions on that list are Eve Lane and Bean Street. We'll build those. I think everything else on that list is an overlay. So we'll bid that out.
And so I think maybe to follow up, this is third-party contractor pricing?
No.
Because it's on the tire, because they had their labor, and we.
That's why I was wondering if this is a true number.
Those are true numbers, because we don't have a paving machine. So we have to contract out the overlays, but the two reconstructions, and Eve Lane, understand Eve Lane's not a full reconstruction. But Bean Street, that's true numbers for our crew to build it.
And this is from last year's projects?
That's last year's projects, and what was left over, I dedicated to Bean Street, and then the engineering for Markham Street. And that still put us, I think, about $100,000 over budget. So that's why you'll see in the line item near the top, it still requires a budget appropriation to get us back to normal. And the reason for that was because of Smith &amp; Spencer, which was, everybody thought that was a good project to do that last year, but we didn't have any money for it, so.
Let me ask one more question.
Go ahead.
We normally get state turnback monies this time of year to use in divvy up per ward.
Yes.
Is that money taken and spilled into that $1 million enhanced street monies? Or do we also have those monies we normally have?
That's the $400,000.
That's in here.
Okay, so that is in here from last year and this year?
Correct. Yes, ma'am. The other thing I was going to mention is that, I don't want to confuse you. If you look at sheet, if you look at page A1 in the appendix, which looks like this, and that's where I'm talking about, we have $1 million to spend, I'm recommending that we spend $800,000. What you'll notice is that each one of these years is well more than $1 million. I expect that these numbers might be a little high. And so I've, those are our cost estimates that are, you know, we didn't have the time to put together a cost estimate for every street. It's impossible, it would be impossible for us to put together a cost estimate for every street in the city of Conway. So what we did was we just used a square foot price, and that's where these estimates come from. What I propose that we do is that we, I go, and now if you approve, if you approve the 2017 list, I'll go and bid those out. And then I'll come back to you, and we'll have an actual cost from the bidders of what it'll cost to overlay every single street. And then we decide when I come back, you know, we'll know, and you'll approve exactly what we're going to do for 2017.
So if we don't see a street that's in our ward that's one of the major streets, then I need to talk to you about that later?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Let me ask this. I think you said that you don't necessarily, your study doesn't necessarily take into account how many drivers use these streets. Is that correct?
Well, what I, what we did was we agreed that since we need $5 million to maintain our streets in current condition, and we only have $1 million, then we know that we're not, we're getting further and further behind every year. And for the reconstructions, I treated every street the same. But for the overlays, we decided that arterials and collectors were probably more important than residential. And with $1 million, we'll just never get to residential. So all we did was just eliminated residential and everything else. Am I correct that?
Essentially.
Essentially, everything else.
Well, I guess my bigger point is, I think we want to try to get the biggest bang for our buck. Just, for example, just off the top of my head, I see Artist Lane on here, and I'm thinking, how many people actually use Artist Lane as compared to maybe Prince?
Or Tyler.
You know, and so, you know, they all need work. But, you know, I mean, if we really want people to see that we're doing something, how many are you going to see artists as opposed to how many are you going to see Prince or some other street that's more heavily traveled?
I'm fine to take comments at this meeting, and then we can revise the list based on those comments. I mean, that's easy, that's not difficult to do. There's plenty of other streets ready to.
Yeah, I know, there are, there are. And I just know that, we talked about it, you know, the section of Donaghy in front of UCA, well, probably really from college southward. Well, college southward, you know, they're still building stuff, so I'd hate to overlay that and have them start tearing it up. But from Donaghy, from college northward, that definitely needs some work. Again, this is me just driving, it's not me being a street engineer. But there are sections, you know, Prince, in front of the Junior High, all that section. So I don't know, just to maybe look at all, maybe look at all those major arterials like that and just give us some pricing and some options on that. That's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
Will we ever, like say West Tyler, you know, it's not in very good shape. I mean, it's got major issues.
Yes.
So my, I'm trying to wrap my head around how we get those streets added to a list anytime soon. You see what I'm saying?
I do, and the difficulty is that an overlay won't fix that street.
Yeah, I know.
Like West Tyler is an example. The only way to fix West Tyler is to reconstruct it. Now, you don't have to rebuild the curb and gutter and the drainage or the sidewalks or any of that. So it's cheaper than a typical reconstruction, but it's still a reconstruction. We've got to tear up the asphalt and rebuild the base. And so we're, instead of, you know, $1.50 a square foot, we're looking at somewhere probably more like $3 a square foot, $4 a square foot. And those are not going to make this list because that's a low return on investment. And with $1 million, if you just, and we're moneyballing this, it'll never make the list.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Until it gets bad enough.
Till they ever get on the list.
Until it gets bad enough that it makes the second list, you know, until it's one of the worst streets in town. And, you know, there's.
I get complaints about it all the time. I mean, it's in terrible shape, you have to dodge all the potholes and the, you know, the asphalt. And I mean, that's all over comedy, realizing.
And my suggestion is that, you know, the list on page B1, you know, I arrived at that list based on just the worst PCI in the city of Conway. But that's not necessarily the best way to do that. You know, there's numbers behind A1, that is the highest return on investment. That's what that list is, that's us doing the math and determining the highest return on investment. For list B1, there are multiple ways you could put that list together. Now, the easiest one perhaps is to use the lowest PCI, but we may want to weight those differently. I considered doing the same thing with list B1 and eliminating all the residential streets. The problem with that theory is then you literally never get to residential streets. But it still may be that we want to weight arterials and collectors a little bit more heavily than residential.
Like Shock Loop, I mean, there's not the, I mean, houses at all on that street.
One thing, one thing we could consider is that there may be a critical PCI for an arterial that's higher than it is for a residential. We could consider that.
And I have been, meetings with Ritchie Arnold and Conway Corporation. When we start doing our street repairs before so, they want to get with us and determine if there's any infrastructure needs they have that needs to be replaced prior to us doing the street work, so that hopefully we can avoid having to go back at a later time and cut streets.
So, and we will continue, this is, I'm proud that we're, to my knowledge, we're the first municipality in Arkansas to have a pavement management program. Are you aware that I'm wrong about that? Okay, that's fair. The state wants to do it, but they're not doing it yet. There are a couple of counties that are doing it, and I know Plaski County is doing it. I know Mark has gotten the data, but they haven't implemented it yet, but we're a little bit ahead of the curve here. But we're going to continue tweaking this. This is complicated, and a lot of work went into it, but we're not done with it yet. So we'll continue to tweak this. Then when you see this list again next year, it may be different. Some of the streets may have fallen off as we've refined PCI's and some may get added. But, and that's a good thing. Streets may deteriorate at a different rate, that may cause that. But what I'm asking for tonight is approval of the single-page letter that I gave you, which is how we plan to spend our street paving and reconstruction money this year, and then approval of this 2017 list for overlays, just the 17 list. Now, the reason that I went ahead and put three years' worth on there is just to give everybody an idea of where we're headed and give opportunity for comment. But I don't necessarily, this doesn't set those in stone for 2018 and 19. Similarly, for sheet B1, you know, I would love to get comment back on the streets we plan to rebuild in coming years. This is the sheet that Conway Corp cares more about than any other sheet. Because when we rebuild a street, Conway Corp, especially when we try to do it like we're doing Bean Street this year, when we, you know, we put it on the list in January, we're still designing it. You know, they are trying to, they're going to have to get utilities out of the way, they're going to be trying to design on top of us. They really need a year and a half at least to budget, design, and move utilities. And so it's extremely helpful to them for us to have a list of streets that we plan to rebuild. Again, this is not set in stone, nothing's final till we vote on it and we appropriate money. But anyway, that's just an explanation of why I've got several years, yes, go ahead.
Hey, man, I'm sorry I'm late, I had an emergency. But I just want to ask about Farver Lane, Ellen Smith to Salem. I mean, right, it's not on there, is it?
Not from, not that part.
It seemed like that part is more and more neat. Has anybody ever drove west on Farver Lane by sailing the right-hand lane?
I have.
It's terrible all the way down.
So what you're going to see.
Yeah, it's not like.
It was down the sign.
I'm sorry, I'm running late.
That's all right, no, it's okay. I'm glad you asked that question, because many of you may get the same question from constituents. My street's way worse than this street, why are you not overlaying my street instead of this street? And the reason for that is my, is our West Tyler example. When we overlay a street that really needs to be rebuilt, we're going to add a couple of years of serviceable life to that road. But we're kind of throwing good money after bad when we do that. If the street needs to be rebuilt, it's not a good use of city funds for us to overlay it. It's a better use, if we decide to rebuild it, then that's fine. But the best use of city funds is to overlay a street that's not already lost, because it needs to be rebuilt. And so that's, you're going to see a lot of that. A lot of these streets are going to feel like, you know, a PCI of 60 is not terrible. And that's kind of the breakover point, am I right about that? He's, half of what I'm saying, he's back there going, he's almost right. There's a breakover point where it starts failing very quick, it starts getting more expensive very rapidly. And we want to catch those streets when an overlay will still add the full, you know, how many years of service life does an overlay have?
It'll have 15.
Yeah, we want to overlay a street when we'll get that full 15 years out of it, rather than overlaying West Tyler when you only get like three or four years out of it.
Disavantaging.
Exactly, exactly. But that, what that means is that you're going to have people that are going to see streets that really need to be rebuilt, and those aren't the ones that we're putting money into. If we had $5 million a year, we'd do it differently.
Do we have a million, will we have a million next year in the enhanced street budget?
We will have a million, probably when I present next year's budget. Tab Townsend wanted that million to be, he wanted a full million in that budget because it was a promise he made. When I present next year's budget to the mayor, I probably will go ahead and take, like for instance, the striping money. I'll probably go ahead and take it out of that and put it in the striping budget, so it probably will be less than a million. But all the money will still be there until, I think the money is committed from the state until '21. I don't know why you'd know that, I'm sorry. What is it?
Seven more years, I think.
Okay, okay. Is it? All right, so we, it'll definitely be there tomorrow. I mean, next year, excuse me.
I'm sorry, what is the $107,000 engineering for Markham Street?
That is the, that's the jumpstart program that Scott Grummer applied for from Metro Plan, and that is paying the engineer to design Markham Street, that's what that is. That is our share of that, it's our 20% share of the engineer's bill, that's what that is.
So the engineer bill on that's going to be over a half million dollars?
Yes, that's the current estimate.
Speaking of Markham Street, when we get around to actually redoing it, is that going to be a complete rebuild?
I would expect so, because it's concrete.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so.
Good news is there's an 80-foot of right-of-way there, so we won't need any more right-of-way. But it'll be completely rebuilt.
Well, again, I love the way this looks, and I like how it's presented. I think maybe, guess what I'm asking, maybe kind of what they're saying is, given there's so many streets, maybe a few more in each of these years, so we do have a little way to kind of pick what we're hearing. But granted, I think getting the most return for a dollar is what's best. If you do put a street like West Tyler off longer, so we can get to things that save them longer, that is money better spent.
And we've got to come up with a plan to get more money into the street budget.
More money, more money.
The problem has been that.
We're working on it.
We've not had enough for so long.
I know.
You know?
We've gotten so far behind.
So kind of the first response is to save what we can, and then look at those streets that need to be rebuilt.
Yeah, we're better off saving what we can, saving the money in the long run.
I think we, as a council, have been saying this for years, that when we get $100,000, $200,000 per ward, that's not enough to do.
To do anything.
No, it's really not. To your point, Mr. Grimes, I think that, you know, we've got three, we've got about $4 million worth of streets on here. And I can confidently say that these are, from a budgetary perspective, these are the best candidates. If you wanted, if you wanted to move some of the '18 or '19 candidates up to '17, we could talk about that now. That would allow me to move forward.
Well, I would certainly defer to y'all's expertise more than our political whims. I mean, we need to do what y'all think needs to be done and what needs to be done.
Especially with the idea of going out and getting actual bids.
That is my, that is my plan. What I'm asking is, are you comfortable with me getting bids on just the '17 list? Or do you guys want to tweak this in any way? Or would you?
Can we get a copy of all of the streets and how they rate?
The. The, um-
We don't have that.
Well-
It's not bad.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can get you a longer list. Um, what's easy is the PCI and the, uh, and the delay penalty. But those are just two variables that, that go into the, the decision tree. Um, and we don't have a ranking of, of every street. What we, we can, we can run other budgets, and they did run other budget scenarios. They ran budget scenarios for us at one million a year, three million a year, six million a year. And I could give you, and so we have lots of spreadsheets that I could share with you.
I thought, Keith, I thought I visited with you before the meeting and you said, I thought you said that you had all of these streets rated.
Yes, and he mentioned that earlier, that it's on the GIS system of the cities.
He meant the PCI.
The PCI is, yes. What, what exactly are you wanting?
I'm not sure what I'm wanting. I'm wanting to see which ones are in really bad shape.
Okay, the, the PCI is what you're looking for, the pavement condition index.
Yeah.
Zero to 100. Yeah, I, I agree with Finley. I don't think you really want to get into too many of the even more detailed stuff. But, but the zero, the PCI, that is already available on your city's GIS system.
Yeah, if you go to cityofconway.org and click on my department's website, under, near the bottom, there's a section called Interactive Maps. And I think the last one in that list is Pavement Condition Index.
Okay.
Pavement Condition Map or something like that. And that's an interactive web map of the city. You click on any street, it'll tell you what the PCI is.
Okay, thank you.
We, we were talking, Finley, on, on the second one down, the, I mean, on the third one down, the Greenwood Circle East to South German.
Uh-huh.
I mean, we're, we're kind of in agreement. We don't think it's nearly as bad as like South, South Favre. I mean, the other, in the Favre.
Yeah, and, 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 I mean, I could, I could look back and-
I know it is probably by y'all, the standard, but-
Well, see, I missed it, but the, you know, the, I mean, the putting the Band-Aid on a bullet wound thing, is it that you think going, uh, west on Favre Place, Donegal, is not worth repairing because the street is so bad that we don't want to overlay it?
I don't want to get the line to you because I'd, I'd have to look back at it to see. That's my guess.
Yeah, I'm, like I said, I'm late now. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
But I know that, that is way worse than going from Greenwood Circle to South German.
I know, I know that, that's probably the case, because I know that there were other areas that we drove and we thought, man, it seems way worse here. Again, the one that keeps coming to mind is West Tyler. But it's because West Tyler had a PCI, it was like in the 30s or 40s. It was really bad. Maybe it wasn't that low, but it was at least, it was below, it was below 50. I don't remember how bad it was. And it was because an overlay wouldn't fix it. And that may be, that may be the case for, for Favre as well. I can look at that, though.
Just ballpark, uh, what would you estimate our total cost for, if there were a perfect world and you had all the money, what would it cost to fix all our streets in Conway?
Right now?
Yes.
Oh, geez.
Five million a year.
A hundred million dollars?
I mean, it kind of depends on what you mean by fix, but, I, I mean, it would be... We've got to be looking at it over 500.
I, I would-
That's an unfair question. That's okay.
No, I'll, I'll answer it. I'm not, I mean, obviously, I'm not trying to give you exact numbers here. Um, based on the, on the data, I think nine million for about five years would get you, get your PCI up uh, in the high 60s to maybe 70, which in an ideal world, you'd love to see. After that, you'd be able to, to regulate down at about five million, and assuming they'll grow with all that kind of stuff. But, uh, you'd be able to get down to about five million and maintain that for the indefinite future.
Okay, thank you.
Wow, five million a year to maintain. Wow. We have a million.
Well, what's it?
That, that's residential and everything. I mean, that's, that's not just, I mean, like I said earlier, that 66% of your streets are residential, but in the budgetary situation you're in right now, you're really never touching 66% of your total streets, because there's not funds for that, because of the priority systems you just have to make. Uh, so.
It just, it makes sense if, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It makes sense if you think about the fact that a, a street generally has a design life of 20 years. Uh, and if you think about our population 20 years ago, and try to imagine the area of Conway 20 years ago, uh, then it, it kind of makes sense that we've got a lot of streets that are decaying and need, and are in bad shape right now.
And we've got to come up with some mechanism also to handle ditches and things. I mean, we've got repairs everywhere that needs to be done and cleaned out.
As a separate, but also a very real problem.
Mary, it could be worse. Finley, you may know this number, but what did the state say about a couple of years ago? They have identified 10 billion of needs and have 2 billion of revenue to see us serve it, so.
That's everywhere.
It's everywhere.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why pavement management systems are becoming more common. And, and I want to reiterate, I, I appreciate your patience with this. We're going to continue to refine this process over the next few years, but we think this is a great start.
But now, this is money well spent, again, I'm gushing over this. This is great. This is great.
Anything else? Uh, we'll recess for about 10 minutes and we'll start the council meeting at 6:30. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Theo, I've got it pulled up. If you want to look at your street.
Ready to start. Good evening, everyone. We proceed every council meeting with a prayer and the pledge of allegiance. If you would like, you're more than welcome to join us.
Father, have we thank you for your goodness to us. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. And we thank you for keeping us safe here in Conway again tonight. We pray for all we do tonight, that you would bless it and look down on those favorably, save them in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now call this meeting to order. Mr. Garrett, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Is absent.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Ms. Exby?
Here.
And tonight, we have a special guest. Twenty-five years ago, Laura Taylor, who's married to retired Major Joe Taylor, worked for the Conway Police Department. Not only is she a major in the Conway Police Department, she is also a licensed attorney. So twenty-five years of service, Laura Taylor.
Mr. Garrett, while the mayor makes his way back over here, I'd like to note that Mr. Ledbetter was here earlier tonight, but because of weather in the area, he is a weather spotter and had to be called away on duty.
You should have received copies of the February fourteenth, twenty-seventeen council minutes.
Make a motion for approval as submitted.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to nothing. All right. Next up, we have our monthly financial report, ending on January thirty-first of twenty-seventeen. Mr. Winningham, are you here? All right.
We've got the first month of twenty-seventeen financials here in front of you. Pretty decent month for sales tax. It was actually up eight percent over what we received in January last year. Other than that, pretty much same story every year expenditure-wise. January is always a big month for us. We've got a lot of dues and subscriptions that are due there at the first year. So we do have a net expense in the general fund going forward, but that's absolutely nothing to be alarmed about. That's something we expect every year. We also usually get hit early in the year with three pay periods pretty quick. That wasn't the case this year, thank goodness. They hit in December sixteen. But nonetheless, right there, end of the year, beginning of the year, we always get hit with those things back to back. Other than that, everything's pretty quiet, and I'll just, street funds, sanitation, everything else is not a whole lot to speak of there. So I'll just take questions or comments if anybody has any, and if not, we can move on.
Any questions? I'll take a motion in a second. There are no questions?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to nothing. Okay, we have two public hearings tonight with ordinances. The first public hearing is to discuss the closing of a portion of a utility easement located on Lot Two of the Axiom Commercial Edition. I declare this public hearing open, and if you're going to speak for or against, would you please state your name and your address for the record, please? Anyone want to speak for or against?
My name is Stephen Hogan. I work with the Tyler Group here in town. We are representing the owner in this project in this easement closure, and I'm here to answer any questions the council may have.
I make a motion. We waive the three reading. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
I'm sorry. Any more want to speak for or against? Okay, we'll declare this public hearing closed.
I make a motion to waive the three reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, you have ordinance before you.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Okay, it's gonna be ordinance O seventeen eighteen.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mike, you're up. Okay.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. Thank you. Our second public hearing is a request to rename a portion of Eighth Avenue to Central Landing Boulevard. I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this? Okay, no further discussion. We'll declare this public hearing closed.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, taking.
I make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
That passes seven to nothing. Okay, next up is our Community Development Committee. Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this portion of the agenda is consideration to approve the nomination of Tom Mickel to the Conway Housing Authority Board and make a motion that we approve that nomination.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the nomination of Mr. Mickel to the Conway Housing Board. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to nothing. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to reimburse Mayflower Water for costs associated with the water line relocation, and that was due to the construction of the Baker Wills Parkway. And Mr. Vincent, do you want to talk about this, or is this? If you don't mind, thank you.
So the, you may recall, the Baker Wills Parkway is what we've been calling the Western Material Loop. This is also the South Interchange. And the Mayflower Water Department approached my office, as well as the mayor's office. Gosh, it's been at least a year ago. My mind's a little hazy on the timeline. But they realized that an existing water line that lies underneath the new road is going to be, is very deep and under about ten feet of fill. And their concern is that if that line breaks, that it would be very difficult to repair it and expensive to repair it. As they requested that we relocate the water line. And Tab Townsill agreed, and they proceeded forward, getting an engineer to design it, and are now ready to proceed forward. They've bid it and are ready to proceed forward with the relocation, construction of the relocation. And this is a request for, to approve them, approve the, forgive me, the repayment. They'll pay for it, and we'll pay them back.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for reimbursing Mayflower Water. Any more discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor of reimbursing Mayflower Water at a cost not to exceed ninety thousand, ninety dollars, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating grant funds for the Spencer Street Brownfield Cleanup Project. And Mr. Grummer, would you like to visit about this, or someone else from the Planning Department? Thank you.
So this is merely an appropriation to receive funds that we received from EPA for reimbursement for money that we spent on the brownfield cleanup. To date, we've spent about thirty-two thousand dollars, and you've seen some of that in small appropriations to the contractor who did the cleanup plan, as well as the engineering design. So this is pretty much just the overall process. We rebid the project. We actually have a pre-bid, pre-bid meeting tomorrow with the secondary bid that we're doing. And we'll open those new bids on March eighth, and we'll know where our contract price is for the cleanup then. So this is just bringing in money that, from EPA, that we've already spent.
Very good.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to nothing.
I make a motion for adoption. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
This is ordinance O seventeen twenty, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. Seven to zero. Mr., I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Ledbetter, you snuck in on me. Yeah. Mr. Hawkins.
And final item in this section, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property located at Winterbrook Subdivision, Phase Two, in the thirty-three-hundred block of Tyler Street. It currently is zoned A-one. The requested residential R zoning is for R-one residential zoning. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on February the twenty-first of this year, and at that time, the commission voted seven to nothing that the request be forwarded to City Council with a recommendation of approval, and we have an ordinance for this item. It's ordinance O seventeen twenty-one.
I make a motion to waive the three readings. Second.
We have a motion in a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for adoption. Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt the ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Our next item will come from the Public Service Committee, and we will start with consideration to enter into a donation agreement with South Ridge Village for an easement right-of-way of the trail system for the Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Ibbotson, would you like to speak to this?
We met with them to donate some property. We still would like a small triangle of property before we get to Donaghy. I think Jack's been talking to the owners of that property to see about a purchase of that, if necessary. But this is just basically a donation of property which will allow us to take Stone Dam Creek on over to the property that we purchased off South German.
Okay.
I make a motion. We enter into this agreement. Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of entering into this donation agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero. Our next item is consideration to approve the request for qualifications to design and plan a tennis facility to be located in Laurel Park for the Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Ibbotson.
Yes, sir. On the twenty-first, we received and opened RFQs for professional services for the Tennessee tennis facility proposed at Laurel Park. The committee consisting of the mayor, Jamie Bryce, and myself reviewed those. There were just two, and we chose to recommend to you, Rick Sal, along with White Daters and Australian Court Works as a team. And we're asking that you approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the RFQ. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming that with a name like Australian Court Works, they have some background with tennis facilities.
Yes, sir, especially in post-its and concrete courts, which is what we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero. You've just got a night tonight, don't you, Mr. Ibbotson?
Yes, sir. It's been a while.
Makes this consideration to accept the interest rate for five-year financing for the completion, completion of the Conway Expo and Event Center. Mr. Ibbotson.
We discussed the five-year financing for this project, and Mr. Garrett was kind enough to give us some numbers to do so. It appears First Security Bank gave us the best rate, and we're asking that you approve those.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the rate of three point oh seven. Is that correct? All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
This money comes from?
The repayment of it will come from, the loan will come from the AMP funds.
Okay, very good. And this is, these are not funds that have already been spoken for in any shape or form or fashion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero. Next, we have an orders to provide short-term financing for the construction improvements to the Conway Expo and Event Center. And we will be plugging in First Security in this ordinance, and the rate that was approved, Mr. Ibbotson.
This is just the acceptance of the five-year financing and moving it forward through an ordinance.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for adoption. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
We have a contractor on this. Mr. Ibbotson.
Pardon me?
Emergency clause.
Contractor already on this?
Yes, sir. Y'all, the council approved, sought.
I thought that we had, but I thought I better check my memory.
There was also, Mayor, a emergency clause that I want to also have on my motion.
Okay, I was, I'm sorry, I missed that. I was going to ask y'all to strike the emergency clause, because according to Mr. Winningham, it will not affect our rates. And Mr. Ibbotson, you do not need the money immediately.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna strike, then I'm amended to strike that.
And one other, to make sure it says Mayor Bart Castleberry.
Put the wrong name in there.
Mayor Tattenzel.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second to adopt the ordinance. Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
All right, just as a quick follow-up, I should have said this in the discussion. The tennis we just talked about will be funded by money we already have collected in the AMP fund. There's more than enough there to fund the tennis center. Then other two priorities we listed, the finish all the boys' baseball and the bridge over day war, pedestrian crossing. That funding, what's left over from the account we already have, plus the AMP funding we'll collect this year, will pretty much cover all of that. So that, that should cover the projects we prioritized, and then we can look to what's next, but that will cover us for the least, at least the rest of this year and a little bit beyond. So we're in good shape.
Thank you, Mr. Ibbotson. Next, we're going to, consideration to approve the bid for an identifier for the Conway Fire Department Bomb Squad Chief Winner. Looks like you're in for a busy night tonight, so come on up and speak while you have time.
The night's over now. Yes, on February fifteenth, we opened competitive bids for an identifier, which is a radiological detection device for the bomb squad. And we only received one bid for thirty-four thousand, eight hundred, forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. We're asking for acceptance of this bid.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the bid from three south. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero. Thank you, thank you, Mike. Hope you get to sleep tonight. Nah, not really. You're young. It won't hurt you. And finally, consideration to retire K nine dog Dax and remove from inventory for the Conway Police Department. Chief Spreadlin.
Good evening. Yeah, we are here to retire K nine Dax. He turned ten years old. We could go today, and he's had some medical issues, and it's just to the point where he can't work anymore, so we'd ask to take him off city inventory and return, or give all responsibility to his handler, Officer Schumate.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve removing Dax from inventory and giving him to his handler, Officer Schumate. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I would like to say I was giving a little talk to the school district one day with the school kids, and Dax was there, and he spoke before I did. I shouldn't have gotten up. It was bad.
Can't follow that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He did quite well. Anyway, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Okay, that ends our business night. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, sir. Mr. Hilton, before you can speak.
We'd like to.
It will take, Mr. Hilton, before you can speak, it will take a motion in a second by the council to vote.
Suspend Robert's orders, yes.
Okay, do I have a motion in a second to suspend? Sorry, Mr. Hilton, we don't, I have a motion in a second. We are adjourned.